I'd like to call the November 21st, 2022 Board of Commissioners Business Meeting to order. As always, we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, Tom Alvarez, a member of our EAC, will lead us in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Tom. Deanna, will you do the roll call?
Denise Hall, President.
Here.
Catherine Carter, Vice President.
Here.
Martha Simulero, Commissioner.
Here.
Liz McNaney, Commissioner.
Here.
Liz McNaney, Commissioner.
Here.
Ruth Damsker, Commissioner.
Here.
Sandra Zidell, Township Manager.
Here.
Megan Weaver, Assistant Township Manager.
Here.
Lauren Gallagher, Township Solicitor.
Here.
Nicholas Cross, Township Engineer.
Here.
David Duffy, Chief of Police.
Here.
And it is noted that Nathan Crittenon, Finance Director, and Yvonne Rieker, Zoning Officer, are absent.
Thank you, Deanna. Lauren, were there any executive sessions?
There were. The Board met in executive session earlier this evening to discuss matters of personnel and labor relations.
Thank you. Next, we have the public comments. Please state your name and if you are a resident or non-resident when you come to the mic. Thank you for respecting the five-minute rule and practicing decorum. Our goal is always to give you the most complete and correct answers to your questions from our staff, who are experts in each of their areas. For that reason, you have the option of enclosing your email address in the registry if you would like us to reach out to you during the week with a full answer to your questions. We had some residents who were concerned that if we answered any question offline, so to speak, then the residents who wanted to hear the answer publicly would be left out. So we will continue to share any answers to questions that were posed publicly but were answered privately at the following public meeting. The following email was sent to Fred Hankin at 9:38 a.m. this morning from our manager, Sandra Zidell. "Hi, Fred. Happy Monday. I am so sorry this email is delayed. I was out sick all last week. At last week's meeting, you had asked, 'Are there any strings attached to our grant application for the acquisition of the Martin tract?'" The answer is yes. Most grants have requirements grantees have to agree to in order to participate in the grant funding. I've attached the requirements for DCNR funding, which applies to all grants from DCNR. When and if a grant is awarded for a particular project, there's a separate grant agreement that would contain any additional terms for that particular project. That agreement would not be available unless the grant were awarded. If you have any additional questions, please feel free to reach out. Best, Sandra. First up for public comments this evening is Fred Hankin.
Fred Hankin, 802 Clover Drive. Yes, I am a resident.
Thank you.
I have a question regarding the yard waste. We talked about that at the business meeting. Should I ask that question later? Would that be more appropriate?
Depends on your question. You could ask right now, since you're here.
I'm trying to get, you know, respectful of your time.
Thank you.
Do we have any township ordinance to say about residential trash haulers? I may have missed the end of the meeting, but aren't they, isn't there something about them maybe should be doing something? And maybe we can talk about that later. But I just think it's a sin to see all this stuff being thrown in the landfills. I think there's not a person in this room who wouldn't agree to that.
Fred, there is an ordinance on the books that does address that. It's Chapter 160, Section 26, I believe.
Oh, you.
Just looking at it earlier today.
There you go.
I don't have the whole code memory.
We're like-minded, that's for sure. So I'm hopeful something can be worked out that doesn't cost the township any money because the bid I saw was a lot of money. So I would have to agree with that. Question then I had was, is it possible to have the Township Manager report from the business meetings accessible via hyperlink?
Like the most recent one with the survey result?
Yeah, so for example, the only reason I got access to your, the survey was because I got, they filed a right to know. A normal, a resident here in this room wouldn't have that information unless they filed a right to know.
Right, anyone that files the right to know would. We typically don't go back and relink it, but we could post the results on our website.
Well, I'm saying if we linked it before the meeting, then that information would be more readily available.
Well, sometimes I like to preserve the ability to maybe not link it before the meeting just because sometimes I'm presenting something that I would like to be able to be the first one talking about. But we can absolutely post those survey results if that's specifically what you're interested in on the website.
Yeah, that was my third question. So when would those results be made public, then?
Well, I don't, I mean, I'm, I could ask Megan to post them tomorrow. I have no issue with posting them.
But the fact that they're out there now, I'm just hoping maybe.
Yeah, yeah, it's fine.
Okay. So one of the, really, one of the questions I had was on question six. That was from your slide deck, which was verbatim answers to people said they knew something about the Martin property. And the number of response was 107. So I was digging through the records and I found out, and correct me if I'm wrong, but 26 of the 107 residents, according to the survey company, were not residents of Upper Gwinnett. They were North Wales 2, North Wales 3, Lansdale 1, 3, 1, 1, 1, 2. 26 of those. So I'm curious as to, well, that actually equals 24.3% of the respondents to that question were tagged as not being Upper Gwinnett 1 through 7. Is there an explanation for that that you're aware of?
I actually don't have an explanation for that, but I saw.
I'd be more than happy to leave this with you.
No, no, it's okay. I mean, obviously, I noticed that in the responses as well. So I have reached out to the survey company to see what the reason is, but I don't have a response.
I mean, it seems like an awful, I mean.
The first question is, were you a resident, are you a resident? So, and the direction we gave to the survey company is we want residential responses. So I'll have to follow up on that.
Okay, great.
Are we sure those weren't addresses?
So I don't actually know exactly, I noticed the same thing that Fred's bringing up, but I don't know exactly why they were included. So I do need to get that result from the survey company.
So what I do is I took the 107 and I highlighted the ones that were, so for example, the first one's Upper Gwinnett 7, which is where I am, and Liz McNaney's from. The second one was North Wales 3. Lansdale 1, 3 was the next one. Lansdale 1, 3 was the next one. Some of them said they didn't know much about it. It wasn't so much that they didn't know anything, it was the fact that they were included in the results. So if you have 300 telephone surveys and just of this number, 24.3% of them were not residents, I'm questioning the, that might answer the question you had as to why there was, what you felt was a lower participation rate and how people find out about things because if they're not township residents, it's not likely they're going to.
Well, I wish that that was, I wish that that was the answer, but I think probably still they'll have similar results on our communications. That was my learning curve on that.
Anyway, I was thinking that.
But yeah, Fred, I will follow up on that. I don't have the answer, and I have asked that of the survey company.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
On page 22 of the budget presentation you gave last, on last Monday, right. The general fund reserve balance is projected to be $10.8 million at the end of next year. So I guess my concern is why would, why might the township deplete perhaps 25 to 35% of that, of that fund toward the purchase of the Martin property if that's, if that's the way that's going to, in other words, if it's, if there's an agreement reached and they're going to purchase for X amount, I know there's some grant money coming, that's going to do a depletion of our reserves, and that concerns me as a tax-paying resident of the township.
Well, I don't want to, I just, yes, you're, of course, those are valid concerns. But, no, the grant, you said there's grant money coming. We have not been awarded a grant. I don't want to give that mass concern.
Well, if it, yeah. I guess my last question had to do with the fact that, I guess I'm just still concerned about spending general fund reserve money on open space when the township already has seven or 800 acres of existing space that has been acquired for little or no cost. And I'm, I'm still struggling with why we would even consider paying for open space when we have so much of it already in existence that costs us nothing, so. Plus, your survey results don't really lead to any conclusion whether residents really feel it's a necessary expenditure. But then again, if 25% of the respondents aren't residents, then who knows how good the results are. I'm just questioning that.
Thank you, Fred.
Thank you very much.
Next up, we have Carl Smith.
Carl Smith, 815 McIntosh Way. So I did have some observations as it relates to the survey you presented last week. I do have a question at the end of my observations, and we'll see how that goes. We haven't had a great track record with getting my questions answered here, but I'll, I'll give it another shot. But the question I had when I was looking over the survey was, what was the purpose? And as I looked it over, it became clear that five out of the 12 questions were related to the Martin tract. So that's 40% of the questions. So it seems that the Board here put out the survey to get feedback from the township residents of how they're doing with handling this issue. And so they wanted to see, I guess you wanted to find out if the citizens would tolerate the approach, which in the beginning was condemnation of the building, then taking the property associated with, by eminent domain, and now it seems we're in a negotiation to procure it or to buy it. That's unclear because I guess it's in the process and being litigated. But the survey, to me, had some conspicuous omissions. And as Fred mentioned just a minute ago, not talking about the open space we already have, 800 to 900 acres, that was procured over the years without cost to the, to the township. And that was done through a bartering system between the builder, the landowner, and the township. In the end, it got worked out because everyone, I guess, got what they wanted. But when you gave the survey, or not you, but when you were commissioned the survey, there wasn't any discussion or any information about the cost procuring the Martin tract. So again, we're in the dark on that. The last number I heard was a $3 million number out of, like Fred mentioned, a reserve of 10.7 million. So that's to procure it, and then there really wasn't much discussion about what it would take to maintain it. And then another question in the survey, I thought was meant to direct people's opinion, and that was a discussion about the fact that there's going to be high-density townhouses placed on the Martin tract. That's inconsistent with the discussions we've had over the summer. I've talked about using that term to describe the cornerstone at Penbrook Station, and I was told, well, that's not the case. That's not high-density. That's same-density or whatever term we would come up with. But bottom line is, we're putting 40 units, or we were talking about putting 40 units on a four-acre tract of land. But bottom line really is, the buck stops here in terms of the township and what can be done with township property in terms of zoning, variances. Both of those properties are zoned light industrial, and really, no residential endeavor can take place until the zoning's changed or variance is granted. So that's, that's clear. And I want to be also very clear that I don't have a problem with the Township Board of Commissioners here trying to preserve open space. In fact, I'm for it, as long as it's not done at the expense of a citizen's private property rights, which is clearly what's been the attempt. But if you come to an amicable conclusion with a resident and you get what you want and they get what they want, that's great. That's America. But the concern I have with this Board is the fact that it'll be done in a way where those of us that are residents won't be told in, in a clear way what the financial impact is going to be short-term, meaning what it's going to cost to buy it, and what it's going to be in the long-term, meaning what it's going to cost to maintain it and what may have been, have given up in terms of tax revenue if it were used in an alternative way. So I guess my question to the Board, as I mentioned early when I began, is, are there going to be future surveys? Anytime there's a decision that's got to be made that has a substantial consequence or impact to the citizens, are we going to have surveys put out every time these types of things happen? Just like the cornerstone at Penbrook. There hasn't been a survey done about that, and I know it's on hold, but I anticipate at some point we'll be talking about it in the future. So maybe you'll be doing a survey about that. Is that something you would consider?
We, we don't have any planned right now.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Carl. Next up, we have Linda Smith.
Hi, Linda Smith, 815 McIntosh Way. I did get a chance this weekend to look over the survey and the results, and the one question that stood out was question seven, where the respondents were asked, are you in favor of the township buying the Mount, the Martin property, Martin tract? 40% said not sure, 31% said yes, it should be preserved. So the statistics don't mandate this purchase, I don't believe, millions of dollars to be spent for that statistic of people. My other question has to do with 1836 South Broad Street. I don't know if you've heard of that property. You've heard from the residents. As I've been, it was door knocking. It's in my district. It's a, it's a home that's on South Broad Street to where the, there used to be a garden center there. It's a farmhouse-type of place. I had several people very concerned about it. Some were on the street, lived on South Broad, some were back off of Sterling. If you drive by it, it looks like it's overpopulated. It seems like it's a transient-oriented, active, multifamily house, I guess. I just was wondering what the township's code enforcement is doing about that because it's not a single-family home, and I've had some residents say they don't want their kids walking by the home. There's usually lots of cars in the parking lot, I guess you can call it, trash furniture on the front porch. I don't see any children or women, or just a lot of men in there. So I, I don't know what's going on with that house. It stood out to me, you know, because I noticed it, the color, you know, it's just bright blue. So I've been like, oh, wonder what's going on there. So, but there are, there's people in, in that development, in District 5, that are really concerned about it. So I don't know if you know what's going on there, but there's a lot of people coming and going, and it's, you know, I said I would ask, so I don't, I don't know if you've heard any.
We, we are aware of those concerns, and actually, our code department and our code officer is working on that property.
Good.
Just doing a little investigation, and they are working on cleaning up the property itself.
Well, yeah, I mean, I can see they're actually doing work on it, but it's the fact that there's so many people living there, and they're just in and out, and it's a little disconcerting for the residents. So, yeah, I'd appreciate any information given on that. Thank you.
It is just, Commissioner Hall, we are working on the external code issues, but as I think the Board knows, we can't go into a person's home without their permission unless there's a reason.
Right.
So as far as how people utilize their homes, the definition of family, all of those things are pretty broadly in favor of the property owner. So we're doing everything we can to address the issues that we can address.
So is that considered a single-family home? I know there used to be a, like a garden center there, so I'm not sure even what the, what the zoning code is there.
I'm not sure if the previous zoning, if the previous garden center use was approved or not either, but we, it definitely is in our radar, and I know Megan and our code enforcement officer have been working on it.
Okay. Single family is family. They live together, they work together, or they, they're, but just people coming in and out, it's not, not an apartment house. It's not a rooming boarding house. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll keep working on getting answers about that, for sure. Next up, we have Mark Connolly.
Hi, Mark Connolly, 11 Carney Drive. So I didn't get a chance to say this at the last meeting because I said too much about the budget, but I just wanted to say that I was very pleased about the vote on the power line trail, so, and I think I saw that it's going to cost the township a fortune of $750 per year for, which is, hopefully, we can sustain that in the future. But I think it's definitely going to bring positive effects on the community around where I live, since I live in Gwinnett Club, so, and I think it's going to be able to link my community with 202 in a safe way, whereas now I'd rather not play in traffic. So I'm definitely excited to see what happens with that, and congratulations on getting PICO to agree to allow us to use that for the trail.
Thank you. Thanks, Mark. Next up, we have Caroline Reyes.
Hi, Carolyn Reyes, 203 Ryan's Run. I just wanted to add to Linda's comments about this house. I've been, I go up and down that road constantly, and back in the, I say, the late spring, I did see, I started to see some what appeared to be demolition work there. And I drive by the house all the time, and I see, I have never, again, to support Linda, I have never seen a child, I have never seen a woman, I only see men, and I see them getting out of cars. But I'm driving down the road, so I don't sit there and watch them. But anyway, I happened to drive by there last night because I knew I was going to be speaking to you. And right now, as of last night, at 9:30 at night, there was six cars, and there is a parking lot on the side, big square parking lot that looks like it is next to a store. And it was filled with cars, and there was two cars on the street. I guess my concern is that I've seen a lot of people coming and going from there, and when Linda spoke about the furniture that's on the front porch, I've driven by there, and the same sofa that last night was sitting down in an appropriate position, but a sofa shouldn't be on a front porch, I've seen it propped up long ways, I've seen it outside, or outside leaning against the banister of the porch. I've seen all kinds of things there. I've seen unbelievable amounts of trash that could not come from a normal family home, as in, like, three trash cans and trash, like, lining up. There is definitely some sort of, it's just like a boarding house. It actually reminds me, the place is in disrepair, and it looks so bad that it reminds me of something that I used to see in, I'm from Maryland, and I'd see in the, the lower-end housing of Ocean City, Maryland, where all these people would live. So I don't know. I guess my concern is, is that if this comes, is this going to be like, is this a start of this? Like, these people that come and go from there, and it looks like a boarding house. Is that going to be what's going to, what's going to come to that area?
I can tell you that we will, we, well, we already are continuing to look into that and make sure that it's properly, everyone's abiding by the zoning and that the exterior is meeting all the ordinances, and we are definitely actively working on it. You should know that for all of our code enforcement, we work very hard to not make it feel like Upper Gwinnett is in a police state. So when there are code violations, when there's an issue, our code officer tries to create a relationship with that person, explain what the violations are, talk to them, find out their perspective. Usually starts by sending a letter, but if they don't respond to the letter, then he will maybe send another letter, then he will reach out, he will try to have a conversation, and he does leave wiggle room for everyone to take care of these issues to the best of their ability. Obviously, some issues get to the point where we do have to do some sort of intervention, and we do have to take legal action, and that doesn't mean that we don't go to that, to those means. However, we work very hard to create a community in Upper Gwinnett. And so our first instinct is always to give the resident the benefit of the doubt and just to gather more information. And that's what Dan is doing right now, and he works very hard and does a really wonderful job. I know because I've done a lot with the coding department since I've been on the Board. And he does a wonderful job, as does Megan Weaver, as does Yvonne Rieker. They all work very hard. And we, like we said, we have received some complaints, and we are looking into it, and we will keep you posted.
Okay.
Okay?
All right. We'll be watching. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Is there anyone else who has any public comments this evening? All right, then, moving on. Do we have a motion to preserve, to approve consent items A through I?
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
One second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any Board comments?
Yes.
Okay.
The reports, letter A, Parks and Rec, I'm just going to highlight just two this evening. You can hear me. Just going to highlight two because in those reports, there's just so much information in there. So again, I just want to point out two before we move on with the vote. Parks and Rec, you don't have to click that one yet, Megan. We had a, a day here for children that were visually impaired, and we were, they were out in the pavilion, and they had basketball, they had tennis, they had soccer, they had baseball. And Catherine and I attended this event, and it was absolutely so amazing and just so, I'm feeling that way now, the way that these children and these families play these sports together. The soccer balls had noises in them so the kids could kick them and hear where they were kicking the ball. Catherine and I both doned lovely masks that they gave us, that we were fortunate that they matched our coats, so we looked good. But they gave us these masks to wear, and we tried to hit a ball, a little bit bigger than a softball, off of a cone, of a road, of an orange cone, and you had to listen to the ball chirping in order to hit it. And to watch these children do it, it was, it was amazing to see this and to know that this is available for kids, not just in Upper Gwinnett, but all over. And it was, we had people from Northern Jersey attend. We did another drill where they rolled the ball to you, and the kids would have to find it by just listening. And it was, it was, it was very difficult. I wish I would have turned my video camera on when my husband tried it because it took him a little while to find the ball. But it was just an amazing day and something that, you know, when we go to our children's events or whatever, yay, 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 but to watch these kids do it, it was just amazing. And I know it was Luke Zoll's idea to have this. He contacted, there's maybe 30 people there. We talked to a lot of the organizers, and hopefully, we'll have this again, and it'll be bigger next time. The second thing that I wanted to mention was the VMSC. Megan, could you click that on? The V stands for volunteer. To me, they're, they're valuable. I mean, they are just, it's just such a valuable service that we have in Upper Gwinnett. These are just the, the statistics for Upper Gwinnett. They had 90 calls in one month, and you can see there the breakdown of what they did. These are volunteers that came out, valuable volunteers that came out. I didn't realize until I really studied these and passed reports how valuable they really are to. are to not just Upper Gwinnett, but the whole North Penn community. So I, I wanted to point that out because I think that that graphic that they supplied to us and the little pie charts really stands out to me, and really shows how fortunate we are in our community to have that volunteer medical service. So they were the two that I was going to focus on tonight. Chief Duffy, I'll, I'll get you next time, because there are some interesting things in your, in all the reports that get submitted. So they were just my comments for item A before we do our, our vote.
Great. Thanks, Liz. Do we have any public comments? Deanna, will you do the roll call?
President Hall?
Aye.
Vice President Carter?
Aye.
Commissioner McNaney?
Aye.
Commissioner Similaro?
Aye.
Commissioner Damsker?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution 30-2022 authorizing the auditors to conduct an audit for 2022?
They're moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Ruth gave the second.
Oh, sorry. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any board comments? Do we have any public comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next up is the homestead exemption for 2023. This provides for a $30,000 reduction in a property owner's primary residence's assessed value in computation of township real estate tax for 2023. So it's a $30,000 savings for homeowners. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution 31-2022, the homestead exemption for 2023?
They're moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any board comments? Do we have any public comments? Come onto the mic, Fred. Yes, please.
Thank you. Fred Hankin, 802 Clover Drive. I brought up at the visit, at the business meeting, I think it's been $30,000 for more than 10 years, perhaps? I don't know the exact, is, was there any chance that could be looked at, maybe increased, or?
We can look into that for next, we can look that, take that in advisement for next year.
It's just a comment, I'm just, since it's been so long, and, I mean, I mean, I certainly appreciate it, I think it's a great, I think we're one of the first townships that adopted it, and we're continuing to do, do that, but I think maybe we could maybe expand, I mean, you know?
We can talk about it at our budget.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution 31? Did I, did we already do that?
Yeah.
Lost my place. Okay, great. Board comments, public comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next is the waiver of tax penalty fees for new property owners. This allows for new homeowners who may not have received their tax bill in time to qualify for the discount period to still be eligible to pay the discount rate for that first year. Someone new has moved into a new house, and maybe they didn't get their tax bill in time to qualify, qualify for that discount period, so this allows them to be able to still pay that discounted rate. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution 34-222, Act 57, waiver of tax penalty fees for new property owners?
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
One second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any board comments? Do we have any public comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Commissioner Carter, you have nothing on the agenda. Is there anything you'd like to add?
Not at this time.
Thank you. Commissioner Damsker, you have nothing on the agenda. Is there anything you'd like to add?
Not at this time.
Thank you. I will now turn the meeting over to Commissioner McNaney.
Thank you. First is item number 10 on the agenda, is a motion to reject the bid for residential leaf and yard waste from JP Mascaro. Since Mascaro was here last week and gave us this report, I did read through it and looked at some of their locations, and I appreciate everything that they provided and all the additional information. I don't think we should bag this idea, leaf bagging, totally, but for now, I think that the motion is to reject the bid for residential leaf and yard waste, so I make a motion to reject this bill, but still keep it open for, for discussion for maybe in the spring and next fall. So my motion is to reject.
Great. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any board comments?
I have a comment.
Okay.
When I read over it, and I talked to Sandra and Megan to get some more explanation, because I thought the gentleman that came last week was here to make the presentation, it like, the way he talked to us, I thought maybe he was giving us a discount, but when I read it, there was no discount. So my questions were, what would be the benefit, why he wanted Upper Gwinnett so badly, since he has so many of the other that were willing to pay that? And so it just didn't make any sense why we would pay it, and to, to try more to get our citizens to understand that they have a right to the twice-a-year for their own trash companies to do it, and how we can communicate that better to them, including myself, because I didn't know myself, that the trash companies were supposed to do it, because I know mine doesn't do it. So I think that it would be behoove us to, you know, put it on the back burner, take a look at it maybe later, and, but it, because it was quite expensive. That's just my comment.
To add to that, Catherine, on the county website, under recycling, they have, they list the, the place where residents can take their, their leaves, and there's several other locations, too, throughout the, the county and elsewhere where leaves can be taken. I know it's a problem, because a lot of residents reached out to me, and.
Yeah, I saw that, too, on, on the, on the website, but I thought that that was, that's like extra added burden on the citizen, like if I'm already paying my trash company to pick it up, now that I know they're supposed to do it, why should I put that in my car and take it someplace else?
And that's something that we've, we've been discussing, and I know residents in the borough have had the same issue. I had coffee this morning with, with the gentleman, lovely conversation about the township, and we talked about the leaf removal and, and things like that. It is a high price to pay, but I agree with you that it's something we need to, to look into for those residents, and, and to make sure that these companies that we have taking the trash out, or taking, that are supposed to take the leaves in bags, that they, they do that, that they comply with our ordinance, and, and they do it, until we can figure out another alternative for it.
And Megan is working on that.
Yeah.
When we hear of a trash company that is not at least providing the two days, she's reaching out to the company, and she is very tenacious about it, like she is with everything.
Yep. Thank you, Megan.
Do we have any public comments? Yes. Come onto the mic.
John Gannon from West Walnut Street. Just in this world where we're so ecologically minded these days especially, and I do appreciate Liz's comment about the county having places where you can go. So many people in my neighborhood I know who have pickup trucks, and people want to help people, and there's so many leaves sometimes that you would think, have we really explored with all this open space that we have, and all how feasible it would be just to have a, even for leaves, a place to, to have them as a, a dump off for use, use in the future even? So have we, have we looked into that? It just seems like a lot.
That was going to be part of the contract, I mean, that's what we talked about, they would, a company that would provide that so that it wasn't just the pickup, I believe it was also receptacle here, just like you drop off your Christmas trees.
Right.
At the holidays, or the election signs recently, it would be similar to that, that was part of the contract we were looking into.
But we'd be paying someone else to do that.
Well, it would be part of the fee.
Because they would be.
Which would they be picking up? But short of that, let's just say we couldn't come to an agreement about, or the budget for it, what would be so hard to designate a couple, an acre of land as a place for, for composting and just, you know, ecologically minded?
Harder than you think. I've actually worked in communities that have done things like that, and unfortunately, what tends to happen, unless it's fenced and like has workers that are watching when people drop stuff off, it tends to become like a open dumping area, not just for leaves. You always hope that everyone will just dump what you're asking them to dump in that location, but that's not always the case. So usually when municipalities do have a drop-off location for any type of composting, it's usually during like a set time, there's a gate where employees can watch what's dumped, because otherwise, especially since electronics, getting rid of electronics is so difficult.
But we can't do, but for less than the budget with Mascaro, and for a whole lot less, we can't have a, say, a person who wants to do some, some, on Saturdays, a retired person.
You don't have like a fenced area that.
But a fence, but we could maybe afford a fenced area, is what I'm saying, versus millions of dollars for a big contract, to have a step in to say, at least we provide a spot for, for composting. So I'm just asking that maybe we could consider that.
I, I spoke to a, a group of commissioners, other commissioners from around the county about what they do with their leaves, and in Uppermoreland, I grew up in that area, in Huntington Valley, they, we used to have a truck come around and suck them up along the, they have a designated place where they put it, and they have designated times from October till November, like a six-week timeframe, where they say, you know, in, in the first week of October, we'll be in your neighborhood, and then they have different quadrants that they go to to take all the leaves, but they have a place that's safe that they can dump it, it's just leaves like that. Something like that, I'm, I'm still in conversations, I'm, I'm trying to help Megan and look for some alternatives to what, what we can do with our leaves, because I, I agree, there's.
Just to have a place to responsibly put them, that's all.
Well, we'll, we'll keep you posted on that, because we're going to deny this one, and then we're going to look into other options.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Gosh, we talked about that so long, I forgot it was still me. Item number 11 is a motion to authorize the advertisement for the 2023 roads program. Megan, could you click that on? That was the, the roads this year, my computer went off, that will be, that Willard wants to do for the milling and overlay. So I'd like to make a motion to advertise the, advertise, to authorize the advertisement for the 2023 roads program.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any board comments? Do we have any public comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Next on the agenda is item number 12, it's a motion to approve the Resolution 35-2022, the application for the multi-modal transportation fund grant for the construction of the Sunny Town Pike Bridge replacement project. I know Sandra and our engineer's been working on this, lots of meetings on this, and just for the record, it's the bridge, it's not the big bridge that has our name on it, it's the little bridge by where the, the Boston-style pizza is. It's one that we drive over all the time, coming to and from, in and out of town, and that bridge is, is an older bridge that we need to, to make some improvements on. So I make a motion to approve Resolution 35-2022.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any board comments? Do we have any public comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
And lastly, is a motion to approve the payment to asphalt paving contractors for the 2022 microsof, micro-surfacing project in the amount of $64,232, and that will be a roll call vote.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any board comments? Do we have any public comments? Deanna, will you do the roll call?
President Hall?
Aye.
Vice President Carter?
Aye.
Commissioner McNaney?
Aye.
Commissioner Similaro?
Aye.
Commissioner Damsker?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Commissioner McNaney. Commissioner Similaro, the floor is yours.
The first motion we have is to, is to approve the 2023 densoed ash bid to Paragon Integrated Services Group in the amount of $22.85 per 50-pound bag, and reject the bid by George Coin Chemical Company due to the bid exception, and the bid exception was actually that they could potentially raise the price of the chemical up to an additional 10% of the bid. So the motion is to approve the, the bid to Paragon Integrated Services Group.
So moved.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Do we have any board comments? Do we have any public comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
The next motion is to approve Resolution 33-2022, the Merck 537 Plan, which would increase Merck's wastewater flow from the West Point site to Lansdale's wastewater treatment plant, from the currently approved annual flow of .5 million gallons per day to .72 million gallons per day. This has no spending impact on the budget, nor is there interdepartmental action required.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any board comments? Do we have any public comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
The third motion is to approve change order number two to BSI for the flow diversion pump station, adding $23,470 to the contract price.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any board comments? Do we have any public comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Wait, I'm sorry, did someone, they had a question? Go ahead. Sorry?
Can you explain what that, the flow diversion pump station? Why are you adding to the contract price?
The, it's a change order, covers the installation of a disconnect in fuses at the Valley Forge Road pump stations. Basically, the supporting quotes came from EMA, which, which was provided by BSI, so it's an increase in order to rectify some of the, some of the whip issues that we were having.
Okay. Thank you.
Or that we are having, I should say.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Commissioner Similaro. Next up, we have the invoices. Do we have a motion to approve the November 2022 open invoices? We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any board comments? Do we have any public comments? Deanna, will you do the roll call?
President Hall?
Aye.
Vice President Carter?
Aye.
Commissioner McNaney?
Aye.
Commissioner Similaro?
Aye.
Commissioner Damsker?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Do we have a motion to approve the, the November 2022 paid invoices?
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any board comments? Do we have any public comments? Deanna, will you do the roll call?
President Hall?
Aye.
Vice President Carter?
Aye.
Commissioner McNaney?
Aye.
Commissioner Similaro?
Aye.
Commissioner Damsker?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
President Hall?
Yes.
I think that the chief has some comments he'd like to make at the end of the meeting, if you don't mind.
It's the end of the meeting, chief.
So I just want to give a quick update on Officer Lynch. Keep in touch with him quite regularly. He still has to receive evaluation and treatment for his injuries, he's going to be out for a while, unfortunately. Excuse me. And just want to mention that I know I briefed you on the incident, we reviewed the bottom where camera footage again, and we have incidents where people resist arrest more often than resist arrest more often than you might realize in Upper Gwinnett. That's not terribly uncommon, but in this case, he was really attacked. It was quick, it was violent. He got punched in the head, his camera was knocked off, and his radio was knocked off. But he had the presence of mind to use his training. He said, "Stop resisting." He had a citizen grab his radio to call for help. He had another bystander take his camera, turn it on, and face it towards him, all really remarkable, considering he just was assaulted and still trying to restrain the person. Officer Romanowicz was the officer in charge, he did a really good job organizing the scene. Officer Whistler was the next person to get to Fred, immediately took control of the subject, who still resisted again. And you know what, how, I'd be upset about this if any officer got assaulted like this, but Fred Lynch is the most well-known officer in the township. At the time, he's getting loaded to the ambulance, a bystander went by and said, "Maybe this isn't the right time, but my daughter loves you. I finished your traffic stop an hour ago, and when I was done, the lady said, 'I hope Officer Lynch is okay.'" Everyone knows Fred, so we wish him a speedy recovery. I just wanted to give you an update.
Thank you.
Chief, I got a lot of emails from people, mailman, who knows Fred? There's just so many, asking, "What happened? What happened? What happened?" And seeing all the comments, I guess we should, we all love Fred. I mean, he's just such a big presence in our community, but it's unfortunate that an incident like this, you know, had to happen for us to, and others to see how important he is, and all the officers are to our community, and what they do in order to keep us all safe.
I appreciate that. And as, as you know, Fred's in a specialty position. He's the first full-time crime prevention officer we've had in the township. But this is an example of where, even though that's his full-time dedicated duty, he still jumps on the radio and takes calls as soon as he's available. He clears a dare class, he stops cars, he still works in that patrol capacity, because we're busy at times, for sure, and he never hesitates to step up, and that's exactly what he was doing on this call. So, thank you for your comments.
Thank you, chief. Thank you for that update. Does anyone, oh, Beth, please.
Beth Miller, 405 West Prospect Avenue. Yes, I am a resident, and I usually have nothing to say. I just come to listen to the meetings, but tonight I came specifically because of Fred Lynch, and I didn't know whether it was going to be appropriate to speak about Officer Lynch,